Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Janie.
Hi.
Me and I've been playing phone tag. How is he? Yeah, how is he?
He's doing, he's doing great.
Oh, he should come by tonight.
Are you looking at the sign?
Uh, probably for, uh, people in this week. I thought of it on Thursday.
Yeah.
But anyway, let's just for once insanity, shall we talk about minor subdivision ordinances?
Yes, now we got a forum, uh, like called the October twenty, twenty nineteen planning mission works actually delivered. We're, we, we mid-law operating formally today, but we've got three planning permission members and, uh, Mr. Wagner.
Jane Rose.
And myself, and I would also note to the record that the other two planning commissioners had opportunity to send their comments and advancements that they have, and they will also get to comment afterwards, that they have no decision tonight. Uh, and so we are moving to the subdivision ordinance or if there's something else we can chat first.
Uh, no, I just, um, I think we should take a look at the minor subdivisions.
I do have a question. Do you happen to have my markups from the last? Um, the only reason I ask is my scanned copy.
Here, go through this. That's yours.
Um, do you really wanna go through Mr. Wagner's first? I guess we have a lot.
Uh, I will, um, Mr. Ruz, um, at the last planning.
Yeah.
Meeting, I basically represented your notes.
Okay.
Um, hope you don't mind, in some cases, I took some liberties, but, um, just letting you know on that, and once we get those written up, um, of course it'll be available for everybody for review for the final.
So, um, did you all get through the definitions then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I'm gonna have a preliminary question before we start, if I may, and it's, I don't know if y'all are prepared to have an answer to that, but why do we even distinguish between minor subdivisions and major subdivisions? Why would we have lesser standards for minor subdivisions than we do for any other type of subdivision? I just, I just wanna understand why.
Well, that's kinda, that's, that's actually not a preliminary question.
Okay.
Part, I mean, you know, history of the county and how.
I, I get all that.
I'm working from, from that basis, that kind of review as well. Uh, generally, uh, minor subdivisions don't require the V dot type roads and all the what you would need for a major subdivision. As we, as it stands, uh, we only allow four houses, so to put them through, again, this is developer, you know.
Right.
The, uh, the idea is a major subdivision is major, it's big, requires a lot more. In fact, a major subdivision requires a conditional use permit. Uh, minors, uh, because they're smaller, they, their impacts are less. Um, they're more family-oriented type deals. I think a lot of it came out of the family subdivision concept. You don't put as many restrictions on it. Basically, keep the density. If you, you're keeping it low, I think, um, a lot of counties, they're minor, and it's, it's every county. We're not unique in that regard. So, a lot of counties allow seven as part of minors before they make them jump through all the hoops, uh, public hearings and, uh, public certification. There's a really good argument, I think, um, you know, you have to have a conditional use permit if you wanna put an accessory dwelling on a piece of property. So, from that standpoint, you know, should your neighbors know that you're getting ready to put four to seven houses? But, uh, will it help manage the, the growth in issues? I don't think it would. I think we should leave minors out of the public hearing type stuff.
But, but the minor subdivisions, the way I read it, we don't speak to private streets. That would be one major thing. The minor subdivisions only contemplate turning over the roads to V dot. I don't see anything in the minor subdivisions that. That, so, and then I'm gonna leave it at that. But that seems to me that would be the biggest hurdle and expense for someone who wanted to subdivide their property if we came in and said, you've gotta have V dot acceptable roads. It looks like from my review of the minor subdivisions, that we don't contemplate private roads in any circumstance.
I don't think we address private roads.
I saw Mr. Wagner, not your.
Yeah, he.
Am I right? Am I, am I missing something?
You're not, you're not missing anything.
Okay, because it says every minor lot shall have which meets a standard, so my thing is, we're already there with requiring the minor subdivisions.
This is central to the discussion of minor subdivisions. What, what happens? A developer can go in there and he doesn't have to create a street system.
Right.
Cause he can have every lot in that minor subdivision, but it's not the secondary road, the existing secondary road.
Except for sixty and, or three sixty.
Except for sixteen thirds, yes.
Thirty and six hun- and six hundred?
No, no, just thirty and three sixty. So, um, yeah, that tells a lot of problems that there have been problems discussion about, or at least I had a lot of discussions.
And then in my, in my mail, I think it did go to Mr. Wagner second, but, uh, Mr. Wagner and I, with your predecessor, had had some discussions about, if I, with these minor subdivisions, in fact, making the two roads.
Right.
So there's a single, so you don't have the issue of, uh, two people driveway and the whole nine yards and flat flats and all this stuff. So that would begin to move back into the major subdivision type of thing. I, I'm still comfortable having a minor subdivision with some lesser standards. I'm not sure, Ruz, you'll want to help the, I want to see them.
Right, right, right.
Give it up. But I'm also, I'm going to work with entirely if that's, uh, the, the equal of the majority.
I understand, and I just want to understand.
Yeah, that's.
One, one of the reasons for the minor subdivisions, proliferation of minor subdivisions, is the fact that they don't have to have private roads. I mean, don't have to have public roads in the subdivision, so it's easier for a developer to go out there, push a driveway in there, build a house, and build four houses, move on. It's, um, a lot more, a lot less expensive. Thus, it'll be a lot less expensive for the, uh, furniture, you know. But, uh, at the same time, what kind of problems have they caused in the county?
Okay.
And I think that's one of the things that, and not, I would need to have a.
Well, cause I'm thinking six hundred is the same scenario. They don't have trucks coming through like Route thirty, but six hundred is a major. They're only there to get to three oh one, and so why would you have the same type of permits? So you don't have these, have four, four lots each that dump into road just like that, where you're stopping in, in, actually, they're blind turns. They're blind turns that come into those.
Another issue is, a lot of these driveways are about some big bomb.
Yeah.
Going back to, they'll have two lots up front, and then another driveway coming out there, so there are two lots in the back. The problem is left to maintain that.
Yes.
And that's, that's horrible. I, I know because I've got the same situation, but that's a horrible maintenance responsibility that you put on, on property. And it's, uh, over time, if the property owner can't afford to buy loads or ten loads of gravel every year or whatever, then it really becomes a problem, you know, property.
Okay, so I don't know that I, I'm opposed to having lesser requirements for my presidential subdivisions, but I just frankly can't speak in order for me to understand what the differences are between the two. I need a chart that says, here's what's required for me, but here's what's required for minor sites that I understand with the requirements.
The biggest, the biggest issue, the biggest thing that the subdivision does is administrative.
Yeah.
They, they don't have to go to a public hearing. The staff can, can handle it.
It's all administrative for minors. And really, for your pros and your comparisons chart, uh, minors don't require the V dot standard roads. They don't require public hearing. Majors require site plan review, public hearing.
They, they do.
They do require.
All streets that are proposed subdivision subdivision decided and constructed in accordance with V dot requirements.
And that's an enforcement issue. As I was driving through Pine Lawn Wood or whatever it was the other day, going, really? But, yeah, the, uh, I just wanna, I would ask y'all a question.
Oh, that's a credible discussion.
I was thinking about entrances onto public roads and the number of driveways. And back to your, your point about that thousand foot long, um, we allow one flag lot, the rest have to front. You have to have three hundred foot frontage along the public driveway, period.
That, they have to have frontage on the public street. That public street can be an entrance.
Yeah, it can be, but it's gotta be a public. It's gotta be a V dot road, and it's minimum three hundred feet. And, um, and again, going back to how we wanna end up here. Do we reduce entrances on public roads by allowing more flag lots?
I would say eliminate.
I was, that's what I was gonna say. Do we have to have flag lots?
That's the other half of what I'm going to, or do we eliminate flag lots altogether?
I was.
Taking out that law private road.
I, I don't know why we have flag lots.
I don't know.
I do.
Well, it doesn't need to be a flag lot. It can be a fifty foot easement back to front rather than a flag lot.
Here's my thought. No flag lots. And if, what if you, cause it, if what that means is because of topography or what other reason, that's the only reason the flag lot would have been permitted in the first place, if it means that a person can only develop three instead of four in the minor subdivision, so be it. The flag lot can't be put in just for the sake of being put in. So, so it may increase the, the sizes of the lots, but the, the flag lots, I mean, from my perspective, should be eliminated.
Wait, wait.
And, and I'm gonna, of course, play devil's advocate.
Sure.
But, uh, first I'll go back to the fifty foot easement. That pretty much creates a flag lot.
Well, it does, and that's.
It's, uh, you got the same thing. If, if the developer buys a lot, twenty acres, that's two lot, two lots wide in the front, and they have to develop two lots in the back, then you're gonna have that easement or something to get back to the lot.
And those create, those are suddenly flag lots.
Yeah.
As soon as you put that fifty foot easement in there.
Uh, generally speaking, I think that the subdivisions can be developed without the use of flag lots.
Oh, well, yeah, I mean, it can be a requirement, and, but the pushback is that we, um, on the, uh, we can't land lock anything.
No, but the reason a person puts a flag lot in is so that they don't have to, they don't have enough road frontage.
Right, exactly.
And that's not, it's a get around to address, to address that issue. And if they don't have enough road frontage, they don't have a road enough front, front, frontage to take the flag lots out. That's my take on it. And it's because you're creating the same issue, whether it's by easement, where there's a driveway, or whether there's a flag lot, whether there's a driveway. The road frontage is an issue.
But it's also a economic issue too, because it generally will, it's very hard to get the four lots, all with three hundred foot frontage. And the way that you, you know, you're allowed, you're allowed to subdivide, you know, right now, five acres in the agricultural side. And those flag lots present an extra lot, buildable lot for the homeowner.
But what we're saying is it should not be for economic purposes, that, and it says specifically, a flag lot should not be considered for economic purposes. It would only be for those circumstances where topography, et cetera. So we can't be talking about a developer who comes in, they know what they get when they're buying the lot. They know that they're good.
So you're basically saying if you don't have four lots full of roo- for the road frontage, then they shouldn't buy it, basically.
They, they shouldn't.
Or you get the road, V dot standard, you get the system back to the.
That's internal. That's internal, that addresses, so it would give you the potential of having more space, fewer lots, central road.
What that also does is all four of those lots, both the two front, uh, the roads, also two back, they can all, uh, have school of stop inside those four roads. So you only have one school of stop, so four on that road.
Yes. I know you're playing devil's advocate. I, I get it, and it's a big.
Very good example of it.
Oh, I understand the concept completely. The, I, I'm thinking in subdivision, you know, because of what we primarily do, is someone comes in, if they've already bought a fifty acre track of length, or they're, they're defined in, then subdividing to get their maximum number of lots.
Doesn't require us to approve.
Oh, I know. Trust me, the number of ones that we don't approve, or, you know, that everybody wants to get the extra lot, and, you know, uh, since we've decided to enforce the regulations, it's been a lot of disappointment. But the reality is, you can only have one flag lot. You can't have a minor against a minor, and even if it's different, you know, all those little things.
My, my thing is just because you have fifty acres, doesn't mean as a matter of right, you get five, ten, what would that be?
Ten lot.
Ten lot. Sorry, or lot, not that all day. It doesn't mean as a matter of right that you get those lots.
Yes.
Those are the minimum lot sizes, and so what I'm saying is, if there are other circumstances that would preclude you from having those ten lots, and one of them would be road frontage, then so be it. So be it. You get, you get nine lots, and then not the flag lot. Yeah.
Now, I'll be nice, I'll be major.
That would be so like.
I understand, I understand.
But essentially, yes.
Well, we were saying that.
Well, uh, in my mind, a large part of our role is balancing the rights of the landowners versus the community at large. And I think that with that in mind, we certainly can and should add additional restrictions, excuse me, that, that are the best interest of the county. And I'm not sure what we, whether it's lot size, whether it's road frontage, some combination of those would be head down for proliferation of small, carving up bowling alley and, and flags all over the rural parts of town. So, what do we have here?
Well, um.
Just one point quickly.
Yes, sir.
If you got fifty acres, I think forty acres, you can do a cluster. Thirty five.
Thirty five. Thirty five would be, I might need to, you have at least forty for solar facilities. That's the minimum lot, but, but, yeah, you're, it's a cluster, and the, uh, just for your identification, because you said earlier, a cluster subdivision is a really good example of, uh, taking authority away from the county. On a cluster, we are prohibited from having a public hearing. So you can drop in your sixty or seventy homes, and nobody will know it until the bulldozer show up. So, when I think of that, I think of, that's one of the things that's, I might note here, I've, I've gotta check the state code or something, so I wanna ask a question off the top. And, you know, get my notes for, to write this up. Step one, you're thinking require V dot roads for minor subdivision if it's gonna have what would have been called a flag lot, because if they have frontage already on the road, there's no reason to put a V dot road in there. They'll just put a driveway.
My, my whole point is, we won't allow four driveways coming in. If they have to have reverse frontage lots, then they can have a dome and do reverse frontage.
So, we would take out the frontage requirement. Well, now, so you're saying reverse, that they're gonna have to front on private road, they can't front on any public road.
They would front on a public road, an internal public road, not private road.
Uh, I'm having trouble with this. I'm, I'm understanding. Well, I mean, I know, but it'll make.
Well, I mean, you're so.
Yeah, I think that helps me too, Ron.
This is, we'll use Route six hundred.
Yeah.
And you put, you have twenty acres, a twenty acre track.
Yeah.
You break it up into four.
Yeah.
Each one of these, for you to build a house on it, has to have three hundred feet of frontage on a public road, right? But you're saying they can't put driveways.
They can, they can put, they can put one central driveway, go back, to the back.
And, and, and apparently, Ron, for your, for your example, you can make the lot deeper, because they are, they're normally, they're normally in bowling alleys.
Yeah.
And, and so, so.
Well, like all the stuff on the promontory, off Water Cove.
Well, there's that is so much, but it's a little water, but, uh, it's more expensive, but throughout the entire county, you've got that as well.
So, basically, we would want to change, I'm just making sure I'm gonna, because I've had, this is similar to something I was thinking about too. Make this like a cluster. The requirements of a cluster, because you know, a cluster subdivision, you cannot front on a public road, period.
No, we, we.
And so this would be the same, same concept. You'd have a central drive, and each of the lots would come off from that public road. So you'd have one entrance onto the public, then you would require.
In that, in that situation, you'd have a, basically, depending on where you wanna put the driveway, where you wanna put it in the center, or put it to one hand.
Sorry, I'm hearing this in the back of my head, that I know I'm gonna get from about five people.
Do we require whoever comes in to do some of those miners to, um, have like a road maintenance agreement with the, road maintenance agreement with the homeowners? The purchase of property?
Did you have a public road?
Uh, I mean, it's in there.
I wanna get away with from the road maintenance agreement. I've been in that in several places I've lived. And they sort of get, in order to enforce a road maintenance agreement, you gotta go to court.
We, we, we would need warrants going to court on road maintenance agreement.
No, the, the individual property, you have to go to court, three to four.
We'd sit in violation.
Again, that becomes a real.
Here's what I would recommend. I would say that we make clear that the county has the authority, and I've seen this in other ordinances, has the authority to require, um, agreements to be put in place for the maintenance, or, y'all are gonna hate this, but this is another way of doing it. And this is how some jurisdictions do it, because if you have a private road, somebody's gotta be responsible. Instead of having four individuals, you could also say, or require the establishment of a homeowners association. And they're, they are required by law to have a reserve study done every five years. There are requirements for homeowners associations to do certain things, to maintain their road. So as long as we have the authority to do it, it doesn't necessarily mean that there has to be.
Homeowners associations don't usually last beyond the first two, three years.
That's not true.
You know, y'all were both the unemployed, weren't you? Endorsed would be too, endorsed by.
You're a really great artist. You're a really great artist.
Oh, don't you like, yeah.
That's, that's a more pragmatic.
So I looked at some ordinances on the homeowners association, or, hey, the same, a lot of them, what I've seen has been, they're still called road maintenance, but they're set up just like USAP and HPA, but their only, their only concentration is the roads.
Yeah.
It has not, they, there's nothing.
So what happens is the roads are not easements. What typically happens in homeowners associations is a road is conveyed to a separate entity. It's a non-stop corporation, it has, and then you have a board of directors composed of homeowners. They have fiduciary obligations. One of those would be to maintain the common area, which would include the roads. You, county says road's not in compliance, we're gonna file, there's, here's a notice of violation letter, and the homeowners association has they on the road, and it has to be maintained. And so you're not going against four individuals, you're going against one entity.
But homeowners associations cover a lot of other things other than that.
No, not necessarily.
Well, that's what I was saying. The ordinance that I've seen have, it's an HOA, but the only common area that encompasses is the road.
But they have other things like the company thing you have.
Not necessarily.
Well, not necessarily.
That's up to the developer. The developer could say, I'm just gonna have, uh, entity, and it's responsible for the roads, and we're just speaking to the roads, and we can say for the sole purpose of maintenance of roads. It's up to the developer whether they wanna do that.
But, yeah, I mean, the setup's not that way.
Generally.
The HOA usually has, you know, what color do you paint your house, et cetera.
A HOA would also say, you are responsible for maintaining your home. And so, the, if there's violation, the first notice of violation is coming from the homeowners association, not necessarily the county. And the homeowners association would have the authority to enforce that.
But a lot of the, the, the way that they're set up in the rural counties that I've looked at, done to that is a bit kind of, as far as houses and that. It's just strictly set up to manage that road, that LLC that.
And oftentimes, let's say you can't have a cars, junk cars that are up on blocks. You can't have peeling paint. You can't have a big house.
But I don't enforce those, by the way.
No, I know. No, the only thing you're concerned about is roads, but all.
Well, no, I mean, homeowners.
So, if you're concerned first, before you get along.
Yeah, that's right. They'd be the ones that would be in charge.
Homeowners association enforces it.
Yeah. And so if the county then says, homeowners association, you're not doing your job, it's against an entity, not, not four different individuals.
But if we do have public roads, internal public roads in the subdivision, then it does.
There's, there's no need. I'm just saying in terms of the private roads to address the concern of the maintenance.
And they can do either the public road approved, or the, or the V dot system, or private so it's made so they may, their choice.
Right.
But it's gotta be one or the other.
It has to be one or the other.
Yes.
Doesn't make the good neighbors.
What homeowners association, they're, they're benefits and drawbacks for sure.
See, my meeting is number three. Gotta pay my hundred dollars. All right. All right, what I'll do is, um, I think I've gotten most of this language anyway. I'll, I'll work up a draft, uh, incorporating, I'm gonna look at some more of the HOA language from the county's standpoint, how to write that up, uh, for the, I don't know. But I do have some examples under it. And then I'll, um, more than likely, I will take the cluster subdivision language, or how the roads have to be served, is.
Yes.
And, you know, apply that to minor.
Yes. When I finish my coffee, y'all have coffee, you guys have some.
Do you?
I can.
Do you? She'll find us.
I'll make you a coffee.
I don't drink coffee. No. My nephews were over, and they're like, got it in the morning, and looked around, and I have a coffee maker that somebody gave me, and it's sitting on the counter, but I don't have any coffee now.
But Don, what you was, why are you arguing that we should restrict minors to the AC and RR districts?
Tell them.
I said, in your notes, it states, it's recommended that minor subdivisions not be allowed in the AC and RR districts. So restrict them to, uh.
Restrict them to what?
Only be allowed in the AC and RR.
Like, like now, the way these districts are formed, if somebody comes in, in agricultural zone, and wants to develop a subdivision, major subdivision, they resume the, they resume. So you don't have, you don't have something out there that. So you don't have, you don't have something out there that's, it's an R1 district adjacent to that major subdivision. Unless we, as a county, resumefit the property ourselves. So you're really not gonna have a situation where, where you're gonna have open land and, or develop a, a, a road, I mean, not a subdivision, in a NA C district, I mean, in R1 district, R1 or R2 district.
This is one of the bold comments, this is one of the bold comments from George, description on the front page.
Do you have an action?
Yeah. Are we gonna develop a minor subdivision generally? I'm all for it, I think.
Yeah. Oh, oh, I, I'm unclear what you're saying there. That really is not, that, where does that come up?
Where's that from?
Where does that come up a lot? If it's already R1.
Yeah.
Typically, there not, no one's going in there to do a minor.
Why? Because it's a small size, that you would.
Well, everything in the county was agricultural, basically, and when you wanted to build anything, any major subdivisions, or as they were doing the future land use back in two thousand and three, those R1 subdivision, yeah, R1 designations are all in areas where minor subdivision, the developer looks to do a minor.
I got you.
It doesn't make any sense to do it.
Right.
But then again, if you say, no mi, if you allow minors only in RR and AC.
Can't drive in that.
Yeah, well, that's one, uh, but, uh, you, I. R1, they wouldn't even worry about going under a minor subdivision, they're just gonna do a dwelling.
Even in R1?
Yeah, I mean, they would just do a dwelling, I mean, it doesn't help, it, I mean, it doesn't fix anything, no. You know what I'm saying? It just, if you wanted to build four houses in a zone that's R1, you could build four houses, or you don't have to do anything. So leaving it in the table as a right doesn't change the use at all.
Doesn't change the use, just, just.
It's a mandate kind of thing.
Why don't you have a by right for that in a B1, B2, and a D1?
By what?
Page? You don't need to. Why would you want? A minor subdivision?
Page is that on, it's eighty-four.
I don't think.
I mean, if we designate an area of business, why would they want a minor subdivision?
Probably because developers would like the option. Whether we should allow it or not is a good point, probably should not.
I mean, if we're gonna go to the expense and the energy of creating the land use, you know, and we designate an area of business, I don't know why we would want residences there.
Well, you can use minor subdivisions for businesses too, if you were or not.
No, that applies for a town spelled single family.
Always get mixed up on that too, because you're saying a minor subdivision, subdivision of a minor, so you could sub.
Well, it doesn't specify that unless there's a definition.
That is for home building, the minor or major fall, if you look into the, the way the ordinances, it falls under dwelling, residential type stuff, commercial has a separate standard.
I mean, maybe it's just me, but I mean, I would personally propose that it not be permitted at all in B1, B2, or industrial, which we had about right for all.
Right, that's, yes, I actually agree with that all part of the, and for some reason, I thought we took it out of the permitted use table.
I think we kind of vaguely went over the permitted use table, but I don't know that we necessarily like adjusted or made any, we made a few changes, but not many. So, but that's one thing, as we go through things, we should also go to the permitted use table and kind of.
Do you know much?
Take that out?
Or, do you think we can take that out?
No.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm in agreement that that needs to come out of the permitted use table.
Okay, can you all be specific and take me to, because I missed the first part of it, figuring where we're going to.
Page eighty-four.
Got it.
Um, so we're subdivision minor at the very bottom.
Yeah.
We're kind of proposing that it be stricken completely from B1, B2, and then to industrial.
That makes absolute sense.
Um, the R1 is kind of up to y'all, because I know Mr. Wagner proposed that we keep just the AC and the RR. But the R1's kind of up to y'all's discretion at this point.
So the, if I may, just, I get confused with this. So, minor subdivisions inside of residential, you say, but you didn't need definition. We only say, meet the subdivision, or the major subdivision, the single lot subdivision, that results in the creation of more than four planted lots. So has that need a candidate for, for businesses?
I agree, is that something that Kellam is looking at doing in an industrial area, in a station one, would that be considered a minor?
No. See, I know the answer to this, and I'm trying to answer it correctly. Commercial separate from residential, all the minor, major, single lot family are under the section of the code.
Right.
Addressing, so that definition is specific to the residential, it doesn't, you're right, it doesn't come out and say, this only applies to residential house building, but.
How do they, how do, how do owners of commercial properties that wouldn't be subdividing under minor or major, how, what is the ordinance that dictates their requirements for subdivision?
When they come in plat, well, see, that, the planning doesn't, if you look at how planning works, it doesn't really apply to commercial businesses.
Right.
And, and so, if, you know, like Billy came in with Stormor, he bought up some property, but he bought existing lots, he didn't replat it, or didn't subdivide it, he would resume it, if, anything, typically. If you already buy a commercial lot, let's see, I'm trying to think, I've got the truck places, is subdividing?
Is, is the.
But it doesn't.
Can, can we, can we go back to the beginning, subdivision, what article? Eighteen, eight, one sixty-two, under purpose? And in third subdivision purpose, that this, this article applies to residential subdivision development?
I was gonna say too, in the definitions, it doesn't refer to residential, but in the ordinance, it does.
One sixty-two?
Yes.
One sixty-two. Under subdivision, under subdivision.
I mean, it's, it's suggested, you know what I mean, it's inferred, but.
Inferred.
But.
But I, I have a curiosity, the car wash is not all about the state guy that owns Foodline, is it?
No, that, that development is.
So, so, so he built Foodline and, and sold off parcel for the car wash? So how did that work?
Yes, he did subdivide it, but it would have just been a subdivision, not a minor or major subdivision, as residential related.
It's a division of property, not a subdivision.
Okay, so here's my question, I, I, I'm all for them, because my concern is not with the businesses. My concern is with, with, with residential impact, right? So, all for their subdivision, but where's the requirement that says, ye shall put in such and such, ye shall, you know, where are those requirements, other than through the planning process?
Yes, I'm not sure.
Well, we have these requirements for the minor and the major that are very specific about alleys and streets and utilities, and where are those, where is that codified?
Oh, oh, commercial, oh, for the residential?
No, for commercial.
Uh, under the site plan requirements.
Okay. Okay.
All of that's under the zoning site plan requirements for any commercial development, because they require, commercial development requires site plan, these are the.
Okay.
And so the site plan review covers, uh, I'm, I'm pointing over at the gentleman who's very familiar with how.
Maybe that's absolutely comprehensive and sufficient, I just was wondering.
Well, that's a debate that we can all have about sufficient, but, yeah, all of that's in the ordinance as far as the commercial.
Gotcha, it comes through the site plan process.
Yeah.
We're comfortable keeping minor subdivisions for residential and major subdivisions, there's enough purpose in your property right now, but it makes it clear that it is for, for housing, not commercial or mall or like that.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, on one sixty-two, we can, under purpose.
So if we're comfortable keeping minor subdivisions, which is the primary purpose, I don't concede we're taking change for it.
Yeah, well, just one of those.
Oh, yeah, thank you. They have jobs anymore.
Yeah, that's just the one with his comments, but that'll be, that's the reference one that you can look at, so.
So it's getting the ordinance, what's y'all's pleasure?
About me? What's the difference between a single lot residential subdivision and a minor residential?
Uh, page one sixty-two, there's subdivisions, so.
It's on page one sixty-eight.
Minor is one sixty-eight, yes.
Do.
Single lot is just that, you can take one tract, divide it.
But then that makes it into two.
One, one lot out of a tract.
Yes. Yeah, it does create two lots, at the end of the day, but it's a single lot subdivision, so you're only going to make a single.
But this thing would be with a minor, you have a single lot, you divide it into two, it's created two lots that falls under the minor subdivision.
No, that would be a single lot subdivision.
No, the minor says, it's within practice of creating two to four lots, you have one lot, you subdivide, it creates two lots, that falls under minor. Under eighty-six point four two O.
On page one sixty-two.
A minor, well, I would, let me, I'll phrase it this way, a minor can result in only two lots, but a single, you can't do more than two lots.
Why would we give a lot, a minor to be two lots, though?
We would, the developer would.
No, I'm just saying, so like.
Because those two lots would be very expensive.
Could we strike that out, though, because it shouldn't even really say two.
They could set that off.
Would you have that situation occur, but it can't?
It can, and I would leave it.
And if it's only two lots, you're, you're pretty much forced to allow the entrances on to the secondary road, because V doc will not, will not maintain.
Less than three. Right, you have to have at least three for V doc.
Right.
And I don't, you know, three word, the, the single lot is basically so farmer brown can cut off five acres from back of his property and send his kid to college. That's what that single lot's for, for mom and law.
And so there's no, and here's my concern, I'm, I'm keeping it, there's no, because this doesn't have any requirements, a single lot. Is there any way, let's say that there is somebody that has a lot, and it is just one plot, and they want to divide it, it's not the farmer circumstance, they want to divide it into two, and they can, they can avoid circumvent the minor residential subdivisions by saying it qualifies as a single lot residential subdivision.
Oh, I run into that all the time.
Okay, that's my concern. So how does it, is, so I just don't want people getting clever and saying, this isn't a minor residential subdivision, this is a single lot subdivision, because I'm just creating two lots, how do you distinguish? Well, one is a farmer, it's intended for a farmer, it's just not applied with this.
Oh, no, no, but the single, well, let me, I'm, I'm gonna turn it around.
Okay.
Because of what the issues are. The issues are, somebody comes in, they want to do a minor, they come in and say, I'm gonna do a minor subdivision, I get four lots. Oh, and then, oh, this little parcel left over in that tract, I'm gonna do a single lot on that. So that gets two more lots, and all of a sudden, your minor subdivision's actually six.
Yeah, right.
And that has been going on for a while now.
Yeah.
So, under, when this, I started working here, started looking at that very scenario right there, and I went, well, we can't do, you can't, you're not allowed to do that. I got a huge amount of pushback, as you probably know, but now everybody's on board with the fact that, yes, that is correct. You cannot put a single lot subdivision next to a minor subdivision, so you can create six. You also can't take the residual lot and suddenly turn it into a lot, because it's very clear in, to me in the ordinance. And one of the things that Mr. Wagner and I have discussed on several occasions, and, and Mr. Breeden, is a lot of this ordinance works if you follow the ordinance.
Law enforcement.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's to your point, you pointed out that this, you talk about clever.
Okay, so here's my question, where do you say, good try, but it doesn't, where do you go to to say?
Under minors.
And then, but why, but why do you need a single lot?
I understand why, because he's saying that they're just a farmer with five hundred acres, he wants.
It's actually a state code as well, there are state code requirements that we have, like family subdivisions are a requirement. I'm pretty sure they define, I know they define single and minor under state code. And in the minor subdivision part, the club, you know, you talk about clever, I have some very clever developers here, and have been doing very clever things for many years. Our ordinance, though, actually, if you look in minors, it actually says, you shall not do a, or in single lot, if you look at that, you shall not use this division to circumvent.
Okay, I just don't know what, how to distinguish between the two. So if it were in front of, of, you know, you for consideration, I don't know how you would have the basis to distinguish between, well, yeah, that is a minor, and that's a single lot, and as long as you've got the language and statute. Okay.
Because I use it all the time, just about once a week.
Do you have a minor request for a single lot subdivision?
Only when the people are trying to get an extra two lots out of a minor. Very rarely had lady, oh, she wasn't coming for her mama.
Problem.
Yeah.
I think this year, we've probably had maybe five or six.
But it's almost always, um, sort of family related, generally.
But usually for a family, they come in.
Do the family.
They would do a family subdivision, but there are cases, I mean, the one I'm thinking of, the top of my head, was, uh, her brother needed help or something. It was actually made more sense to divide it than to try to do a conditional use permit for a secondary dwelling. So it does come up, but it's not frequent, and most of the time, it comes up only for developers.
That's why I don't like it.
And I, and again, it's been easily defensible. As soon as, well, they didn't think it was gonna be, I think.
All right, so.
All right, that's, did we get more?
There's still a lot, that's why I'm asking, because I've been talking to them all, we're, we're on eighty-six point four twenty.
So we, I know, I know you don't want to get into the, the guts of this, but.
No, no.
Do we want, do we want to debate proliferation of minor subdivisions, how, and how we deal with that, before we really get into the guts of the ordinance itself?
Well, it'll make it easier as you go through the ordinance itself, if you had to.
Particularly when you wanna go.
With the old way.
Yes. So, we wanted fifteen lots? Thirty lots? Oh, I like fifteen lots.
Fifty acre.
Then I won't have anybody arguing with me. Yeah, you can get fifteen lots of every acre, um, yeah, fifteen acre.
Fifteen acre.
I mean, we've got, keep it as is, which is five acres, minimum lot size.
For AC.
For, yeah, this is all about that, of course. Five acres, minimum, what we have now. Five acres minimum, what do we have now? Ten acres, which is Hannover's preference. Fifteen acres, which is the banana, you know, the, don't build anymore. Five acres, I have some issues with the five acre minimums for other reasons, but I'm going to try to correct those problems other ways. From the developer's standpoint, I will tell you, the, the five acre works for them because it, it's attractive to their market, to the starter type homes. It also makes the financing of the homes and the land values here, you know, a lot in King William, basically, it's sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars and it doesn't matter how big it is. Size does not matter on price, which is very bizarre for anywhere else, but that's how it's working here. So if you go to ten acres, there's issues with financing through FHA, but the real estate agents tend to have been telling me that for the most part, they, they, the ten acres wouldn't hurt them. As far as being able to sell the property, I like it because of the open space, you know. And we're going to get pushback, I mean, no matter what we do.
You can ask me, I'd be fine with ten acres, I just want to use a better strategy to put fifteen in and compromise with ten, or start with ten and kind of hold for a round.
If you've got, if you've got a five acre minimum, that doesn't prohibit the developer to do four, ten acre lots or four, fifteen acre lots. But we don't have any maximum.
What do you want to do maximum? What do you even want to do maximum?
We don't, we don't say you can only do five acres.
No, no, I mean, that's the.
Seven, ten, fifteen, whatever you want to, if you've got a fifty acre parcel and you want to do, you know, two fives and.
Oh, no, we actually, I mean, a lot of people, not a lot, for those kind of custom home, you know, nice stuff, we have the, the tool for that is our twenty-five acre exempt. So, so if you hit twenty-five acres or better, you're exempt from most everything, so those are the quality houses that you would get. The five acre minimum, again, as we have it set up now, is very developer friendly. But other than that.
We're sales friendly.
That's what I mean, when I say developers, they, they're, they're.
For themselves.
As Mr. Kelman and I have talked about, so yeah, you grow houses, some people grow.
So here's my thought, five acres is not conducive to agricultural use, it's just not enough. It's just, it's so, I'm, I think we're all kind of saying five acres and ten, I like better. I do think that there's something to the fifteen, maybe we go back to ten, but under, I do think we need to increase it. And if there is an owner who purchases property that's developed as AC and they don't like that, then they need to come through the rezoning process to get the smaller size lots that they want. But otherwise, I don't think it should be approved by right, we need to increase them.
Well, how about the people who aren't out here buying up land but who already own it? Well, guy owns, oh, guy owns a hundred acres, he's bought it twenty-five, thirty years ago, kind of an investment property. When situation is right, you want to subdivide it and sell off houses.
So are you making that argument in support of the five acre?
Yes.
Well, what I'm saying is, he has the absolute ability to go in and rezone, but I do not think that five acres is conducive to agricultural use in our county. Five acres is just most of the same.
And he carved a hundred acres into ten, ten acres.
No, I'm just playing, I'm.
No, I understand.
Um, if I have a hundred acres and I bought it thirty years ago and said, hey, man, I'm going to, I'm going to put five houses out here when you, when I get a chance. And then I bought it knowing that, you know, I could get five lots.
We could take, then why are we at this table?
Oh, no, no, like I said, this is, it's not one sided, though, because there are, the agricultural zone isn't just necess, when we, we allow, if you look at your permitted use table, we have all these permitted uses in agriculture.
Right.
It doesn't say that we're going to try to be farming, that it's going to be corn, it's going to be bean, we're going to allow things to go in the agricultural zone. One of those is residential housing. All the concerns that we all have about all the stuff, I'm, I'm right in the devil's, devil's advocate role, though. We say agricultural zone and these five acres isn't conducive to agricultural use. Why not? Dwellings are an agricultural use, according to our ordinance. You can build a house in the agricultural zone, which makes it an agricultural use or a use appropriate for the agricultural zone. If you say it's not conducive.
I hear exactly what you're saying, I'm just saying, I don't, and, and you've got other jurisdictions that are more populated, for instance, Hannover, that have higher lot minimum sizes in that zone.
Agricultural area.
Yeah, in agricultural areas, and so I'm just articulating, it's a balance, I'm not saying I don't want the developers in, I mean, they're, they, we, we want the folks in, in here. I think there's just the balance of how to do it and how do we want to preserve this county in a way that is consistent.
And that's where you get into my argument, why we need to increase from five acres. I'm thinking ten, I would need more, I think to maintain the character, we need more open space.
Right.
I think that's, because I'm not, I don't think the county is going to win the fight on remaining an agricultural as our number one business necessarily.
It may, it may not.
But we do want to maintain, I think the whole county is in agreement, that we want to remain a rural agricultural field.
Well, I would just say go out loud county and see what's happening out there.
Well, go to Ryan and look at what happened in Ryan.
You drive west of.
You can't, you can't move, it's.
You drive west of about seven, you've got these ten acre lots, you've got three batches of, they're not farming.
Yeah, and that's, it's just, and it's just a sea of roof.
And I do get concerned, though, and fortunately, that doesn't apply to minors.
Right.
What we're talking, I mean, if, the ten and fifteen acres, the rezoning part, you'd have one heck of a time even getting past Sherry and I if you went into the middle agricultural zone and said, I want to rezone it R one for three houses or five houses or whatever. That's fine zoning, we wouldn't do it.
That's the thing we're trying to.
I think we're all on the same page, and it's good to have the dialogue.
So, oh, no, 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 you and I, I'm using you right now.
Yeah, it's good, it's good.
I think, I, my point earlier was, I think the opportunity is there if someone wants to develop four lots and, and larger sized lots that they can use for small farms, farm mats or whatever you might want to call it. We've got a good example, Chris Cruz has a saddle farm, he bought a lot in a minor subdivision that happened to him, I think he took it out of a lot. And, and maybe he's using it for farmer as well as his neighbors.
I mean, the downside because it's been so residential and he wanted to, he wanted to build two things, he could do the residential area, so we have the downside that we're so bad.
All right, well, let's go ahead and make a, a decision on lots of, do we keep it the same?
No, I would say we want to give it ten, the question is, do we start with fifteen, go back to ten, do we, or do we start with ten and try to hold for a round?
Well, is it an interactive process, or do we get a second bite of that, in other words, we propose, it goes, how does it work?
If, if I may.
Yeah, please, that's your, it's your job, actually.
So, so we, we, we've been around a lot of times, and we're going to come up with what we think is wonderful.
Yes.
Before the public hearing, we'll have meetings and they're able to hear what we think is wonderful, it is wonderful. At that point, we have the ability to, to adjust, and then we go to public hearing, and we certainly get the opportunity to adjust, and then we go to the board supervisor.
Right.
So, if we start with fifteen, when we get to public meetings, if we compromise down to ten before the public hearing, that might make things smoother.
I would propose starting with fifteen.
Well, that was my rationale, again, whether that's the way we want to go or not, another whole ballgame.
Well, no, the board supervisor is going to weigh in.
Well, no, that goes without saying, even once, because all we're doing is recommending to the board supervisors, and they'll have their public hearing, and those who can, who finish it, I, I prefer.
I'm, I'm gay, I think that's great.
Well, but the whole product for me.
Yes, and I.
His, that, that's the process, for me, this is a draft, so what we did, we came up with a draft and we brought it to y'all.
Great.
And then y'all are doing the draft that you're taking to the public.
Yeah.
Then we're going to do a draft to the board of supervisors.
Which incorporates.
So each of these drafts is a review process, then it gets to the board, at which point, and they, they like to change, so.
I'd say fifteen, and then hopefully negotiate down to ten. I think if we were successful enough in the fifteen, which I don't think is going to happen, that would probably wind up bringing us more individuals to the county that get a little lot. Five acres is just giving them a lot of city and town transplants, and they come with very unrealistic expectations. Maybe ten acres would kind of give us a mix to where you could manage expectations a little bit.
Absolutely, okay, great.
We're going to start game eighty-six point four twenty, or.
If we really want to, sorry. Okay, do you want?
Down the line.
And the first comment that I'll get here.
Yeah, mine just had the line, or I don't know.
Okay, here's, okay, so.
For whatever reason, so I'm just going to talk, you don't have lines.
So, so the first comment we have is Mr. Wagner, here's, I think, four twenty four C. Did he bring farm selectors?
You have stuff before that, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, then let's, like, do what, let's go with what you have.
Okay. Okay, so. My first comment would be, under streets, that it's just instead of ingress slash egress, the minor subdivisions shall be directly to from a public, public street. I would just say access to minor subdivisions shall be from a public street.
So what's that, if you'll chap and verse me, it'll be.
Four A.
Four A generally.
Yeah.
Generally, last sentence, access to minor subdivisions shall be from a public street. And then it says new streets, well, let's keep going, and then.
So every lot, minor subdivision shall.
But that's fine, it's a second sentence, access to minor subdivisions shall be directly from a public street, this is clear now.
Fine.
That's all. That's it. Okay, you're going to, you're talking to C.
He's not, he's not four C, you know, he's, he's here before four C.
No, no, okay. I did not work that long.
There's, we're all going to get.
Oh.
Only one entrance to existing secondary road.
Oh, okay.
Will be allowed. Probably set exactly.
Would that be under C, or would that be? It could be under general. Or would it be a line in layout?
I think it would go under general. Every line and narrow subdivision shall have a new public street, which meets the standard set forth by the Virginia Department of Transportation, being the best egress for non-subdivisions.
And then access to minor subdivisions shall be directly to a public street, and then you can say only one.
Will be directly, directly to the.
Well, the minor subdivisions shall be only.
To a, to a secondary, an existing secondary road.
So how do we want to write that, only one access point, only one entrance?
I think that's the way to say it, is just, shall, the subdivision shall have only one access point to the second, to the existing secondary road.
Where you.
Where the address to general.
The white circle. Subdivision shall have only one access point. Two. And it's either secondary highway or new public street, right?
No. There will be, kind of existing, the new, new public streets will be the internal streets.
Yeah, I'm, that's, I need to, to look at the cluster.
Okay.
I need to look at the way the clusters.
Retile, okay.
Well.
That cluster is worded.
I want to see how the cluster, because the cluster addresses that.
Okay.
Identical, so, and that's the wording that I want to throw in there.
I, I, it's, I think, I think we agree with the concept.
Yes.
Well, and I put here, I'm going to make myself a note and use cluster standard for internal or whatever.
Well, that's a good one for us also.
And access. All right.
And, and this was four twenty four E, unless you have a four C.
I had a four C, but.
Yeah, that's why I'm being curious.
Okay, well, under, oh, C, so under C, right?
I, I, I'm, I'm sure it's in the C.
Well, we hadn't gotten to C yet, uh, well.
I think it's still a B.
Yeah, because we just were working on generally. Now, C is in one little alignment and layout.
Oh, I'll back up, do we, y'all are good with the new street definition, because, okay. Alignment and layout.
This is where we're talking about access to adjacent property. So if there's a property behind, there's anything we've got to allow access to that property. The problem there is, when you allow access to that property, it's the same thing we ran to.
We created the framework.
If you allow access to that minor subdivision, then it puts, it, it almost states upfront that.
What are you providing?
That's going to be a minor subdivision.
What, what are you providing access to?
Yeah, I mean, this is actually.
You, you have, you have to allow access to, to adjacent properties, you can't, you can't land lock it up.
But they're already saying.
Saying if you land lock the property, you've got to allow them access.
Aren't they already land locked? If I've got twenty acres and I'm putting it into four fives, four tens or whatever, the property behind it already was land locked.
This C, this layout, what basically says is, instead of creating, you, you've got your minor subdivision, and there happens to be some other neighborhood over here, any existing street, stub streets, you're supposed to connect to the next subdivision, which really doesn't belong at all with minor subdivision. And I mean, that, what they did is they copied and pasted when they were writing this, minors should not, are not allowed to. Minors should not, are not allowed to be.
A button.
Adjoining another subdivision.
So this is more of a major subdivision provision?
That is definitely a major subdivision. And I think somebody cut and paste this.
So we're striking that.
Uh, let's, no, well, let's not strike.
Look for it.
Uh, shall make provisions, oh, actually, no, street arrangement. Well, and we're gonna put in, this first sentence needs to go. Because you can't.
Because there's not gonna be substands.
Yeah, if you're continuing streets. Streets, I like that, that's fine. And providing for services to adjoining property doesn't necessarily mean the adjoining property is a subdivision. It could be one. So I can enforce that. Uh, true. Really taking out that first sentence is the only thing that bothers, that I think should be taken out. We can enforce the rest of it. It gives us more enforcement ability, like you can does that. Yeah, all of that is worth earning.
Y'all okay with that?
Yeah.
And now, you're, you're de-spacing those stations.
I don't have any doubt, it means, so it could mean. Wish I were an engineer.
Probably you're close enough.
No, no, it's so different. All right, so are we on E?
Yes.
Are we striking E entirely? Is that what you're suggesting, Mr. Wadker?
Yeah, I believe it may not apply.
It doesn't apply, but does it not apply?
Minor residential intended primarily for access to individual properties, so could be.
No, it's not a situation where you're gonna have a.
It doesn't roll the.
Yeah, but if, if taking it out isn't gonna help me enforce, what if I give one of those oddball things where cutting through those four guys will get you over to three sixty yard where it's quicker? I'd rather leave it in because it gives me some enforcement.
That's fine, can I make two recommendations, just because. So in the second paragraph, so minor residential street intended primarily for access to individual property shall be, take out so. Shall be arranged to discourage their use by traffic, so take out so and ask. Believe it or not, as a lawyer, I don't hate verbiage, it's not necessary.
And sometimes I like those little way of words. Little way of words.
If it serves.
If it serves a purpose, but that was.
If it serves a purpose, then that's fine.
So that takes care of E. And do you think four G?
I don't understand F, it makes no sense. It says where the minor subdivision it joins or contains a US Highway three sixty or state primary highway route thirty, no residential lot shall be platted in a minor subdivision which has primary frontage on. I think you take out where the minor subdivision it joins or contains.
Um, what I had said earlier about secondary, a minor subdivision on secondary roads would have the same language. So if you put that language in there, generally it would apply to both, to all minor subdivisions. Regardless of whether you're on secondary roads or primary roads.
No, I'm just saying you start with the first, first word is no residential lot shall be platted in a minor subdivision, take out the common, which has its primary frontage on US Highway three sixty. The whole first, where the minor subdivision it joins.
Yeah, that's very confusing.
So just no residential, no residential lot shall be platted in a minor subdivision, take out the common, which has its primary frontage on US Highway three sixty. All works is fine.
And now G.
Will, will this technically apply if we're taking it out of B one, B two and industrial?
Yes, this still. You still have to, an alley, I know a lot of people think of as that paid thing.
Right.
Commercial things. For me, an alley is easement behind the buildings that if you ever have to put in water sewer, electric lines, all that, you have right of access.
They were saying, taking out alleys.
No, leave it, I mean, because alley and.
How would you, how would you?
Because, I'm just saying, because it refers to business, commercial and industrial areas, so, I mean, would we, if we're only allowing these minor subdivisions in the RR and the SE, would it technically really apply?
Oh, yeah, that, that part.
I don't see where it applies at all. And the last part there, which is the easement shall be provided for utilities that's covered elsewhere.
Oh, wait, we, yeah, we took, we're taking minor out of B one, B two.
Right, that's why I'm saying.
Well, to me, at a minimum, the first sentence should go away. Alley should not be permitted in residential areas except to provide access to attached dwellings or multiple dwellings, or where it will require.
See, it doesn't really apply because it's minor subdivisions.
Right.
And the last part there, it says easement shall be provided for utility lines that's covered elsewhere.
Right.
So alley is gone.
Can I ask a question about F? I'm just gonna, quick question. How do we determine three sixty and state highway, three hundred as being the main roads? And why would six hundred not be on there?
Uh, because three sixty and thirty are both major thoroughfares as defined by V dot.
They do not, V dot does not consider six hundred a major thoroughfare.
It's a secondary road.
You'll have a lot of minor, a lot of.
I would like to see six hundred on there.
Secondary roads that carry much more traffic than the private road, it's not in our case here, but in a lot of cases it will. Yet, they're still secondary roads and, and. I can go on and on, but that's.
I'm not gonna.
And even if you couldn't, I.
But just to, just to assure you, it will not be.
Right, okay. Thank you.
And that doesn't mean if it wasn't appropriate, if it was appropriate, we could do additional things for six hundred, but it would not be.
Okay. Because what's gonna happen, is this to solve it happens with six hundred?
Well, I mean, so reduction of traffic impacts, uh, six hundred is not a primary highway, but we could still include that in the ordinance, could we? If it's appropriate.
Include it in the ordinance.
In the, in, in reduction of traffic impacts, no residential lot shall be planted in a minor, which has primary frontage on US Highway three sixty or state Highway thirty or six hundred.
Or secondary on six hundred.
But we, I thought we'd already agreed that we're gonna do that.
If, if we're gonna pull all of the access, if they gotta go internal roads for all minor subdivisions, that eliminates.
Yeah.
But then apart from that, when you finish the whole thing, if you're not comfortable, you always break that up.
There may be another way that draws concerns.
All righty.
Anything before in?
Sorry?
Well, we, we just have finished striking alleys.
The one. I'm not seeing roads, I'm not sure why that applies, if that applies. But I guess it's possible that you could have a minor subdivision on a designated ten road.
I would leave it in just because of, well, it may not be something obvious to me now, or potential it could happen.
It could come out.
And I'd rather have the ability to do something about it or not. Also, need to work on a quilt trail.
Do you, right now, you have a situation where you have bonds on minor subdivisions?
I thought there were.
Because none of the minor subdivisions have been built in the high internal streets.
So, and we don't do, yeah, we, we don't have any bonds on that?
Wood subdivision, are you familiar with that one on six hundred?
No.
Kenwood Homes.
They do, but not any, any.
It's a single street that goes back and serves for a lot. I haven't driven back in there, I suppose it has a cul-de-sac at the end.
Does Kenny Woods place?
Looks like the subdivision street had been built to state standards.
Well, Cuz Lane is like that. Uh, if you go down Cuz Lane, that is, and.
Yeah, Cuz Lane.
They did, it's all built right to, and they've got two houses on the river valley.
But Cuz Lane is never taken system, that's probably built, so.
It was definitely built, it's a great template road.
Yeah. But I'm, I'm just wondering if, if that, that's, you know, when you discuss that now, but I'm just wondering if that was built to be taken in the state system.
That, that remind you later.
Even looks like a lot.
So this is where I get my confusion, all of that private roads are not permitted, which is J, maintenance of public streets, a subdivision should provide for maintenance of all new or improved public streets until such times as the streets are accepted into the secondary highway system. And then it does provide for a maintenance and identifying bond.
Right.
And so the world will.
And that, that should stay.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, and I agree, but does that include private streets?
Yes.
Okay.
Wish I think we already have.
Okay.
Yeah, well, definitely with the change that we're proposing, all private roads will disappear.
Yeah.
Everything will have to be taken into V dot.
Which does a lot of people worry if we're.
Yes, and raise the cost a lot. I, I mean, I'm just, the, the basic argument is going to be.
When you go to fifteen acres, it does raise the cost more.
Well, no, when you go, you'll have to put the V dot road, get the V dot road into the system, because it's not like it's free.
Yeah.
I mean, you can build the V dot roads to state standards and make them approvable or, you know, ability to take into the V dot system. But when you take them into, there is a large fee associated with taking these roads into the V dot system. And that is going to increase the price of building a house significantly.
I was gonna say, if you go to fifteen acre lots and you got four lots.
Makes it more worth.
It makes it, it's gonna have, it's gonna require more streets, more length of streets, escalator costs.
Very, I mean, the lot, the lot, that's where we're gonna get a lot of screaming, just.
So are we eliminating private roads?
Well, they're.
The way we written it up.
Yeah, it doesn't really, it precludes it anyway, apparently, so I don't know that, yeah.
That is the biggest complaint on cluster, why the clusters haven't been built and have been proposed so far, is the V dot road is so expensive that it makes, you have to have at least seventeen lots is the math I've done for a cluster to be worthwhile. And so, we're talking about a V dot road on these minor subdivisions, which is going to, you know, accelerate the cost per lot exponentially, actually, it's gonna be big. And then.
The liberation of.
Oh, it'll definitely cut down on people's ability to afford a home in the agricultural zone.
It, it also, it also will decrease the number of homes that cause property taxes for the existing, existing residents to go up because you've got the small house and small lot with the way out, with the bus driver, the bus test to drive out to Neverland. And, and so the existing homeowner is paying more for these new folks. And that's what the people want, that's what we can do, but if they don't want that, we can make it so that, so that more appropriate housing where it's built out of rural areas is appropriate for rural areas.
And some people argue that V dot maintained road is not fully appropriate for rural areas. I, I, I.
So here's the thing, it goes back, yeah, it goes back to the same thing, if you do that, then you're imposing on the developer's requirement that a homeowners association be, and they're gonna hire an attorney that's gonna be directing the documents, creating the entity and the land becomes owned by, and oh, by the way, any street or any common area owned by homeowners association is tax exempt for a rural state perspective, I would predict a case. So you're gonna have to go, it's one way or another, to ensure that it's maintained.
And, well, and again, I am playing devil's advocate, you mentioned schools and resource, I'm just gonna argue the other side for you. We already go out there.
All right, so I, I, I have a bet for you.
Okay.
You will take ten buses and you'll pick up three hundred kids all over the county. And I'll have ten buses and I'll pick up two hundred and seventy of them, and, and one bus will run through thirty. We will see which takes more time and what bus track the time.
No, I absolutely agree with you, but we already have buses going all, forty-five minutes to an hour. Bringing kids and, already, so if we put a couple more out there, it's not like the buses aren't making that problem.
But, but they'll have, and they'll also have more stops, because right now, they can drive in one of the minor subdivision, they can pick up five kids, or they can make five stops on the road with all the cars waiting behind them.
Yeah.
With each individual stop.
Like, I'm gonna stop some six hundred that I, I get, oh, it's crazy, I'm thinking, I'm.
Not as many as you can, ten years.
That's correct.
But I'm just, be, I mean, again, this is preparation. V dot road, increased lot sizes are all really good for slowing down the sprawl and, and slowing down housing starts.
And serving rural territories and citizens.
To help with the.
Type of areas that ask.
It's also putting a damper on development. It is reducing the number of opportunities for people to find affordable housing in a beautiful county that I love and.
They can, they can still develop minor subdivisions.
Yeah, understood, but there's a lot of people who are like me, who want their five or ten acres out in the middle of nowhere and, I mean, I could not afford to get out into the county. So, I mean, those are just things.
I think the argument is what impact do they have on the county, what impact do they have on of those people that want to maintain the rural areas of the county, and what impact do they have on the road system?
You gotta look at it from a perspective.
And that's what I'm doing, I'm playing the other side.
And if, and if folks like you and me, that's one, exactly what we got and we found in Kingway County, the existing subdivisions. Close to him, shopping as well.
Yeah, there was a reason I picked mine, I know, but again.
I'm on a pretty accurate line.
But then again, you know, the, like I said, just, we need to be aware going forward, how our decisions are gonna impact a very big portion of the community that we serve.
Any, anything that we do, the limit.
It is going to impetuous man.
And, and, but, I mean, there's a balancing act between what a landlord wants to do to this property, and I'm a big property, property is first and the quality goal. But we have what the property within the context, the community as a whole, and what are the impacts on neighbors? Sometimes impacts are, are thought there and aren't really there, and other times, they really are impacts. Putting a lot of small houses up in rural areas takes away from the rural looking field and it increases property taxes for existing residents. I don't think any more closing is, I'm doing restrictive, but we'll, you're, and supervisors will ultimately make their decisions. And supervisors will ultimately make their decisions.
So we are still. I'll give you a takeout, N.
Takeout?
N.
Sidewalks? Yes, that's one of the topics. If developed, we'll build sidewalks. That's fine. We're not required.
I don't think, well, talk about rural nature and aesthetics and imperious areas, and you want me to add.
So, so we're going to strike sidewalks, right?
Please, okay.
I had that in my thoughts, but I was just recording.
We struck in, number N, second row.
Can you do that? I've got my little minor thing that the code citations, Dobson, consistent as to how to put them throughout.
Oh, yeah, we, we've got that from the first round. I've got it here to, to do some consistency. Well, I've, I've heard of it, but.
All right, then what's the next, do you have anything?
No. Oh, board of supervisors spell out the county for street names. Wait. Do we accord a defined term?
Well, I've got a big note from last time, defined terms, do the acronyms. If I'm going to do it, it's going to be consistent. There's, there's, yeah, formatting issues, structure.
So we're at five, what?
We should have two blocks up, you know?
So if I have A, I have nothing, this one here is like, do you have five A?
Yeah.
All right, we go up to five B. That's appropriate.
That probably.
See, I don't know here.
And don't touch C, please.
Why?
I use that concept.
No, no, I would just say, I would just change the nomenclature, some of the nomenclature, but that's fine.
So, so, so are we adding Mr. White? Are we adding Mr. White? Can I just comment to repeat?
What is your comment?
Well, let's change that way anyway, but we want to get to that lots now.
Oh, yeah.
What if we only went to ten acres? But would that still matter? So we don't need, we don't need the ten or fifteen acres? So, so, so we would not need, we would need ten acres, but we need this.
No, I mean, this is all appropriate after the five acre part. Leave it as it stands, that the actual lot, this doesn't include the actual lot size, so we want it to provide satisfactory.
Then we're up to C.
The only thing I would change from is remnants or parcels of land, minimum area including parcels which failed for protection tests, which may be left over after subdivision tracked, shall be, I'd say incorporated into adjacent lots or otherwise disposed of rather than to remain as independent parcels.
I actually had a problem with the otherwise disposed of house, instead of house being disposed of, other than being added to the adjacent lot.
Well, this is where you asked me about enforcement of things in minor subdivisions proliferating. A lot of times, the developer will come in, want to do a four lot subdivision on my thirty acres. So I can get four lots of twenty, oh, wait, that's still have this ten acre remnant left over.
Single, is that what you're saying?
No, they're, they're making it a lot.
Yeah, no, no, you'll be adding to, yeah, yeah, it's a lot, it's fine. But I'm more willing to see otherwise disposed of.
If you're not incorporating it into adjacent lot, what else would you do? And how do you dispose of it?
Put it in conservation.
Common areas.
Use as a common area.
A lot size larger.
Well, that's where it incorporates the other parcels. What you're supposed to do is if you have, and again, clever, what you were talking about. You know, you do a five acre subdivision, you have a three acre lot left, three acres of land that could not include subdivision.
Yes.
What you're supposed to do is add it to the adjoining lots.
Yes.
Because it's a remnant, that's, you know, anyway, that is a very key thing for, for my.
So, but if you, if you don't incorporate it into other lots, and let's say you keep that three acres.
It can't be a lot. You cannot have.
Because it'll be non-conforming.
It's no, non-conforming means it conformed at one time.
Okay.
You can't, you're not allowed to have a three acre subdivision lot.
Okay.
That's where the big argument on the subdivision and the proliferation was, they were calling them residuals or remnants, and, which very specifically says a remnant or residual lot cannot have a tax map number. It can't be a lot.
Then it can't otherwise be disposed of.
And I don't care how, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's all John was saying.
Well, but so, so if I went to remnants, remnants or parcel of land, a little bit of area must be added to one of the.
Adjacent parcels.
So I said incorporated into would be adjacent lots, and you take it out or otherwise disposed of.
They incorporated into, so I mean, basically you have one lot. You're splitting it up. You don't have a leftover, so you can't split it up and have a remnant. Is what you should be saying.
Yeah, no, 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 no. The, let's go to the flip chart. All right, get a tract of land, and it's twenty acres. And we want to actually just go to seventeen acres, seventeen acres. So five will go into seventeen three times with two acres left over.
Right.
Okay, so you divide this up into your three acres, well, so you've got
I, I, but, but.
This little two, three acre parcel here.
Is part of that parcel there.
Or.
You've got to have a five point two or whatever.
Right, so, but what you, when you're subdividing, you're going to have all of the layout cycle be the simple. So you'll just move this lot line here to take that out and it'll disappear.
Right, but, but, but in essence, it's not a remnant. When you were doing the initial dividing, you can't create a remnant.
No, you almost always create a remnant.
Everybody's saying this, we shouldn't.
Right.
Yeah, he's just saying.
Oh, you want to back up a step.
Yeah, he's just saying, don't, you, whatever you create, you can't.
Create a remnant.
A remnant. So it's just similar language.
In other words, if you, if, if you've got a minor subdivision, twenty acres or more, you divide that subdivision, you divide that property up into the lots.
Yeah.
Period.
So there are no remnants?
There are.
Use your lots incorporated all, I'm not sure how you said that.
Yeah, because, I mean, not like it's going to happen in the future, but in the past, we've run through so many planning directors that, you know, somebody will go, oh, well, here's three acres, which is sitting here, and, you know, four planning directors ago, they understood that it couldn't be built on, but then information is provided to the current one. And to me, it just creates an issue to say, no remnants.
I think it's going to be, it can be a very clean, drafty provision that provides for that. Now, what exactly that is, I don't know.
I've got confidence in my planning director, he's able to, I'm working for him.
He's building.
I'm actually reviewing in my head. I'm reviewing the plan.
And if there are reasons not to, at our next work session or subsequent work session, you can explain why existing wording or tweaking wording is better than not allowing remnants. You're good at that.
So the language would be, in the subdivision, the subdivision shall not create any lot that is less than the minimum lot size.
Number four. If there's a better way, we suggest that, but that would work.
Sherry's going to laugh scared because I talked to her about this one. Why is that? You have no idea how much I hate the term residual lot.
It's used all the time, too.
Oh, you don't have to tell us.
Yeah, that's.
The residual lot.
Well, hey, you can't, my definition, it can't be a lot.
Right.
We're striking D altogether, right?
Talking about.
Striking D altogether, correct, five lots.
Uh, yes. And then, you know, on D, and even here, you talk about the fifty foot width, the easement on the flag box. Again, I think as soon as you put an easement in there, it makes the flag box.
Right.
Yeah, I think that they'll do something to buy enough to.
Restricting, to restrict.
So they apply.
Yes.
Period.
Ron, can you explain what the sub ownership means? I don't understand. Is, is it just because when it gets to the plaque part and you're approving, you don't want more than one owner of the property?
Let me make sure I'm telling her.
Yeah, that's E.
Yeah, this is where a developer comes in, buys up the lot.
They did like.
Too long, so I've got one not too far from here. So, you know, two different developers own the same lot, but when they go to record it, that's the minor subdivision. To get the individual lots out, they have to be in a single ownership to make that transfer. That makes sense to you.
But if they own two individual lots, they're already two separate lots.
If they went in halves, he's on a minor, hey, let's, let's buy this property. We're going to make a minor subdivision.
Wouldn't they have to do a property consolidation of the lot?
I think that's what it requires, this is requiring.
Okay. Okay. I'm not going to worry about it. Thank you.
If it doesn't jump into my, if it doesn't jump into my head, that means it's not hurting anything.
That's fine. That's fine. I just wanted to know.
And what, you know, what easements?
No, I understand that, just all the, I mean, does this serve your purposes, Ron, in terms of the drainage and utilities? All that?
Yeah, design standard, yeah, it does.
Back up. To the suitable disposal.
Oh, yeah.
The health department certifies that it's okay, but if it comes out after the lots are planted and it doesn't qualify, what do you do with that lot?
That also falls under any lot that is deemed not suitable for building becomes basically a remnant, has to be incorporated. That's, that's addressed earlier on the thing. That's why we require reserve in primary, yeah, but in addition, without bill signature, they can't help. But King William County, to be honest with you, because we're so sandy, it's hard not to have. They don't, but, but one reason the exempt works so well is because you figure on twenty-five acres, you're going to find a place that'll have a suitable drain field. Had a suitable drain field.
In the lower end of the county, where the archetype goes within eighteen inches of the surface, has that impact better?
I don't know. But I haven't had a lot of issues. I mean, Bill and Robert have never said a whole lot about failures out that way. I just can't imagine it's a problem if I hadn't heard about it.
It was not, not as much minor subdivision development or.
Yeah.
One, one question, a quick little thing, but does the, do the propers own propers that market on new homes, is that also a part of minor subdivisions?
No.
Because not.
Because you don't go through the, you're not going through the polluting process of lawyers. And saying propers and residential on the same sentence in today's environment is very scary. Please don't do that.
It is.
So you're not paying for those four kids.
No, absolutely.
Um, Ron, one thing I would ask is, at least in Northern Virginia, and that's from my perspective, may not need any further explanation, but they've gotten rid of the word propers?
No, that's why I'm making that comment.
Okay.
This, what, what, what we're doing.
Condition, it's like, it's not a proffer, it's what the applicant has proposed.
See, we can't, we, for residential and propers, I can't even entertain a developer telling me what he wants to do for the county in order to build his, that is, the new case on residential propers is made.
But we don't have to agree.
Yeah, well, I know, but I, the problem is I, to, to be covering my, my, and, you know, proper residential do not go together. We just don't live in the same sentence.
I understand, yeah, that's right.
If we find that the impacts are such that it's going to be impossible to build that subdivision.
That's a good improvement, too.
Right. Oh, yeah, but the whole idea of propers and residential at this point and the general climate is, what, what, I don't even know what propers means. When it comes to residential.
It's been used by a lot of.
That's right.
Judge will be using.
Oh, anyway. Uh, let's see, subdivisions.
So are we, the easements are?
Yes.
Don, if you like the easements?
No.
And monuments?
Well, that's the same.
Do we need good that the monuments cannot include sections of Confederate?
I thought we went to include that they had to.
Oh, good.
We have to include only Confederate judges.
Confederate Union. I never understood Judson Davis.
Neither I.
I, I seriously never, but he wasn't a Virginian or a General.
We're not talking about Civil War monuments.
Sure. All right, um, all right, so, yeah, that's, as we're.
I wish I had a lot of words for that.
Uh, performance guarantees, anything under A one two?
Well, I'm going to actually, Bobby, if you would look at section eight, performance guarantee, item. Do we want to make the review every bond that we take in? Then I would suggest that we strike and satisfactory to the county attorney from that section. Because that's what I'm bound to right now, whatever they want.
Can we change, uh, can we change attorney to administrator?
I, I would just rather take it out and leave it up to the, the, leave it up to the community development.
So does that mean you will not have to sign off on it?
Yes, that's.
What does they?
Now, I'm not, we don't.
What does they send us back?
A one, you're saying to remove this and say agent, can't be agent?
Oh, I missed that one, yeah, approved by, um.
The county agent?
Yeah, by the agent.
Yeah, that's better. And please change seven two. Yeah.
And that takes care of that here.
Let me ask a question, who determines the, the pattern?
We do. So what we do is, a developer gives us the cost, you know, engineer, we could have a P E stamp, estimate of the cost. We add twenty-five percent of it, um, to establish the bond. And the one we're working on right now, actually, the county attorney has come back and thought twenty-five percent was too high of a tack or a fee, but I figure the project management overruns, a tag like that, twenty-five percent is reasonable. And anyone who doesn't wanna pay the extra twenty-five percent on a bond, that'd make me nervous.
Me, too.
Yeah, so, anyway, we, we take that, we make the determination, but we, they have to sign a performance agreement, and then we have to have a letter of credit, sure, yes, or whatever it might be.
Do we have any way in provision to revisit the bond amount?
Yes, but typically for these performance bonds on the subdivision on roads, typically that provision is the developer can come and ask for a reduction in his bond. But because.
But they're coming in at such time that we've got thirty percent.
Yeah, and they can come and ask for a reduction in the bond. But it almost costs them more to ask for a reduction than to, it doesn't. Well, yeah, because they, before I would reduce a bond, their P E has to show me substantial completion of.
If we have a subdivision, which we had a couple that come in and they get any instruction, they for some reason go bankrupt or whatever. How do we, and another subdivision, another subdivision comes in, three years later buys it out and starts again, do we redo that bond?
Not if the bond stayed in place.
Or if the bond is insufficient three years later?
Then I'll try. But the general assembly.
Well, no, that only applies to the previous system.
That's, well, that's what you're talking about.
You're talking about.
So a developer starts, goes bankrupt, and somebody else takes over.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, the general assembly, what's playing doesn't apply to that.
Yeah, I know what the general assembly did, but we never, we never raised him out of that bond to cover the actual cost to you later.
And there is no mechanism, I can think of.
To freeze the bond?
Because it should really never come up, but we know it does because of what happened in two thousand eight.
I mean, what potentially makes it insufficient three years later?
Costs more to do it, so, so, I'm gonna, and B dot changed a lot of your standards.
I mean, to me, it would seem like we would need to put a new bond in place at that point.
How do you do what you do for the solar, I mean, that's an option.
You re, yes.
Every five years, we have to reevaluate it, so.
Yeah, we need, we need some kind of language now to allow us to be able to raise that bond if necessary.
So how does a bond stay in place if somebody's through the bankruptcy? Well, you have a couple options, and I wouldn't, you know, you could call the bond, or if they claim bankruptcy, someone else comes in. Then I guess, because the bond is only with the entity that posted it, so I don't see how you wouldn't call bond. And then say, when a new developer comes in, say, we called bond on this, right? How would that work? Because.
Well, we called, if we called the bond, then that means we take responsibility to, right, not subdivision.
Okay, but the problem that I keep seeing is that it's not as simple as just calling the bond.
Right.
Because then, you know.
There's the performance area, there's a lot of.
Yeah, I mean, and there's a lot of pushback, and people going bankrupt.
But in the irrevocable letter of credit, even if they went bank, the entity went bankrupt, the insurance company, that's the whole point.
But they're gonna fight us as much.
Well, yeah, they're gonna fight us, but I'm saying it doesn't disappear just because they went bankrupt.
No, that's why I'm saying, but, but, but if, if they go bankrupt, the LLC, I mean, the, the bank or the insurance companies holding that bond with that letter of credit with those funds. Some, how could you not call the bond, even if another entity comes in and they say, we're gonna develop the project, that bond is only good to the previous entity, right?
Well, they would issue me another bond, and then I would.
Cancel the.
I would cancel the first one.
Gotcha, okay.
I mean, that's, but that situation isn't what normally happens, which is they go bankrupt, the insurance company just holds the letter. We can't call it, for whatever reason, but obviously, it's a lot harder to call, well, any bond.
What's the point of having to go belly up, I mean?
Well, see, what they do is to go belly up, now, and then we have a choice, we can call it, we can call the bond in as soon as we want to finish off those roads as a county. And typically, the bond is, that takes a lot, that's why the twenty-five percent's in there, there's a lot to that aspect of it. And most subrogation people with Liberty or whoever, Northwestern, they're gonna find reasons not, they're gonna say, hey, we haven't failed in the performance because we're waiting for another, you know, another buyer, somebody to take it over, there'd be hundreds of reasons we couldn't call that bond in.
Which makes me wonder, what's the validity of the bonding?
Right.
Because, I mean, it's a contentious project. I know, unfortunately.
Well, the bonding, for, well, you know what I used the last bond for, was more of a hammer, when it had nothing to do with us ever cashing that bond in, but they still had it posted as. As a way of saying.
I'm just saying, we, we need some provision in there that allows us to, if necessary, to, to call the bond and, or to increase the bond.
Is it?
Incrementally. I just have to go to that, finish that.
Are there certain types of bonds that we would not want to accept?
Actually, I review with typically, if I get a bond that comes in, you know, letter of credit, whatever. Uh, I will look up the bonding agency to make sure it's reputable, reputable, because there's a lot. There's a lot of telephone bonds out there, bonding companies, where they're always, I mean, sure, so, that's one of the things that, why the county attorney issues in there, is they do, you know, they review the bond agreement and check the companies, but since I've been here, I've been the one checking the companies and making sure the bonds were legit. Like, you know, my preference is escrow accounts.
Never kidding.
That's, but, yeah, three million dollar escrow accounts. But, yeah, that's, the bonding is more of a hammer, we had a twelve thousand one here.
Did you? I've seen it for stormwater.
It was, this was for a Lincoln Bay lawn.
So can you do a bonding with different types into one project, or some is escrow, some is?
Oh, that, that's gonna be completely, well, I guess we could require, I don't know, that's, that's beyond my.
Oh, it's just that.
Because escrow accounts, as a general rule, more than a couple thousand dollars. So once you get above twenty, thirty thousand dollars, you're going to go to your bank, or you're going to go to your insurance company and say, I need a letter of credit.
So, this is so beyond my understanding that, but it's so critical. It's so critical because if it fails, then it impacts the county and the taxpayers, so I'm wondering if there is a, and I don't know what type of professional it would be. Like, in HOA, I'd be saying, you've got all these insurance provisions in your governing documents, you need to take it to your insurance carrier, make sure that the insurance in place required by your documents is sufficient for your common area. I'm wondering if we need that type of review from the bond.
Potentially, like I said, what I look is usually whatever company's issuing the surety. It's a real quick check to see what they're standing for and, I make sure that it's legitimate. If I see a Liberty, a Northwestern, Sona, Essex, I mean, there's all places drawn from, I don't see how we could make people provide the surety.
Well, is reviewing the every five years current enough? Or is that?
Three years, I think, in the case of subdivision, it should be less than five years.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of provisions that the surety companies want to renew their letters of credit annually.
Most of them do, that I see.
And then, I mean, so we could just put, probably not as far as language for.
Another question is, should, should that responsibility be in your hands, or should that be in the hands of the attorney?
I do not want it in the hands of the attorney.
Right, and that's.
I mean, that's a personal preference.
That's, that's you now, five years from now, you decide to retire, you get the next guy in.
Yeah, yeah, for, for my predecessor, but I think anybody you have as a administrator or planning director type are quite, anybody at this table can review whether the bond's, I mean, from that standpoint.
Oh, and I'm not recommending that the bond process come out of your wheelhouse, what I'm recommending is, in order to determine whether this is sufficient globally and comprehensively, are we the ones that have the requisite knowledge to say whether it's five years, two years, whatever?
Well, it's, but I would say, I would agree, I think we should annual review and the surety companies annual.
Typically, a subdivision is gonna come in, they're gonna be here and a half.
Yeah, I, actually, I give it three years for the big ones.
Yeah, I give it three years at least for big ones.
But when you get in an out of law situation like with everything, a couple others that we had.
Well, that might be out of law, but two thousand eight is not gonna be out of law, it's going to happen again, it's likely to be very long.
Oh, but I'm going future some, I thought about, well, now, as far as the performance part of the bond, they have to sign a performance agreement as part of the bond process. And we have worked out, or we're in the process right now, working out a standard performance bond agreement that, one of the reasons the previous county attorney and I and everybody else went through so many different versions, this one, we're gonna get it straight with the county attorney, but it will be per s form, so as far as approval, the county attorney is gonna be a per form type thing. So going forward, nobody's gonna be changing that mousetrap, they're just gonna be using the same performance bond, because we've done, we've done performance agreements for roads, and we've developed one for a residential subdivision control, and then we have a landscaping performance. So from going forward, the responsibility will be here.
I guess, Bobby, what I, what I would like to say here is that, oh, we don't need to call them the county attorney, they don't mean these things. We should have some revision set up at county attorney, that the county attorney would review and say, this is bad, this process is bad, so then, Ron, can we?
That's actually what we're doing, that's why I just said.
So like, they sent us, I've sent them our documents, they've done revisions or anything that's, you know, they deem necessary, and once we get everything back fully of what they expect it to be, then we will, I guess, at this point, do the process ourselves.
And you have documented process?
Yes.
So for?
For bonding.
For bonding.
I mean, yeah, that's pretty straight.
For verifying the. Companies and everything like that, do you have a standard process?
No, we do not have a standard for that.
My concern with that is.
Uh, but that would just be a policy, yeah, policy.
The reason I'm totally concerned about this, when I would have an engineer call it again, I mean, planning director call it again. I guess did not, in other words, he closed out the bond early, and the contractor walked away and left all the county unbedridden.
Yeah, I'm real familiar with the concept.
So I actually came in and the county paid B dot to finish the service.
Yeah, and we had several where either the bonds weren't issued, no requirement for a bond, which I really didn't get it, or a couple of cases where they refunded the bond amount as if they had completed the work, and they hadn't, and then, you know, well, we have the famous one, so. I was right, yeah, I understand the concern.
It happened in this county too many times, too, I just don't see that.
I've been cleaning that up for a year.
Are we still at B or at this point?
We're at six, seven, eight, B.
So if no action stays within the thirty day period, the request should be approved and a partial release granted to the subdivider developer. You know, ten words of days of no action, you request a D approved. If your staff is hollowed out down the road, and, or your, or your successor staff is hollowed out, and there's nobody in the store, so to speak, this is putting us in a bad spot.
I'm going to say yes to that part, but, and again, I, I. I think this may have something to do with state law.
It may.
Well, so, so what I would strongly suggest, and again, I, you know, I would not, I would hate to see a developer undoing any meetings because we were incompetent. But the flip side is, I would hate to see us, because, because of some point in the cracks, being unable to act. If state law does limit us, I would like you to include the state law citation in the section. If it doesn't, I would like to revisit that issue to see, is there some better way we can do it that protects the developer, but also protects the county? There are three places, it's, they get the money back, if we don't do something, and again, we have an obligation to be competent, professional, and fully staff, but in the event that we're not fully staffed, and, and one person's balancing a bunch of balls, and some drop, they can maybe just walk away, and we lost that, if state law requires it, so be it.
Yeah, looking at this, it does look like it came right out of state code.
So take it out, like, see the state code citation, and then we need to go through the process and make sure this doesn't happen, if we don't do anything else, but this.
Yeah, we have, there's a number of state code requirements on time.
It makes sense.
Well, because counties are infamous for not.
Sit, sit, sit.
No ruling.
That's a good point.
I spent thirty years in state government.
In Stalingrad.
I, I get it, so there's a balancing act, but just, if we don't do it by this, by ten days, they get to get out of jail.
I would remove any references to developer, it's used to see subdivider or developer, developer's not a defined term, so.
Unless state code requires it.
Yeah, this looks like applying the federal state code.
But, but again, it, as we described, that state code does not require it.
That, no, no, I'm just saying the subdivider or developer, the subdivider and the developer are the same thing.
Right, and so unless state code requires, that it's what it came from state code, but, but again, if it does not, then we should. And subdivider or developer, several places, I was like, it's usually the place.
Yes. Yes.
Wow, man, I just like, I just wrote an M into a W, so.
So, we're going to take a kind of a little break. Are we staying till noon, until plane? Is our work session important?
It is, it's locked up before we manage the work, and we're ready to discuss it, and we're willing to say we can. If we're not ready to discuss it, we need to.
We have a, we do have a meeting tomorrow, so.
Do you have a date for it?
No, what, I'm just wondering, the major residential is a, is a big deal. I'm prepared to speak up to it to a certain point, but it is a lot of information. I'm wondering if we need to have some of our colleagues involved in that discussion as well. So, just a question. It's taken us over two hours to just get through the minor subdivision.
I think that, I'm wrong with your, I think, I think the minor was more difficult.
Okay.
I don't, we're not going to have a whole lot of issues.
Okay, okay, okay.
I don't believe you'll have a lot of issues.
Okay, okay.
Minor subdivision, major.
Yes, they are, right, okay.
Well, the good part about majors subdivision is it's very prescribed. We have a lot of rules in place and actually fairly successful in enforcing those rules. And at least with majors, they're right there.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, minors are the clever, where you talk about clever, that's where that comes into play.
Can't really get clever with majors.
And we have all those proceeds, so I think just going through, making sure it makes sense.
Gotcha.
Bobby, it looks like we have a long night ahead of you.
Yeah, yeah.
They did, no.
Where do I have tomorrow? Can I have another one?
We have a work session tomorrow.
I got you to come to tonight.
You were so funny, so funny.
Oh, you remember, good.
So what's y'all's pleasure for breakfast morning?
That's y'all's, though.
Oh, I, I don't know.
Do we now want to talk about density?
Yes, why don't we, yeah, why don't we do, because that really does.
Can I make one comment on C and then we can get to that? The only thing is that on C, upon, and then it gets us to the major, but upon, this is on 171, written request of the subdivision or developer, it shall be required to be periodic partial releases in a cumulative amount equal to eighty percent of the original amount based upon the percentage of facilities completed. So I don't understand whether saying eighty percent has to be the release when it's based upon the percentage of facilities completed. Why wouldn't it be, why wouldn't it be proportionate?
Oh, I read it again, because I know the answer to this one, because I've thought about it already.
Okay. He's only done fifty percent.
Thirty, yeah.
Why would you lose eighty percent?
Yeah.
Actually, this is the other way. This is to make sure that you don't give back a hundred percent of the bond, even if they're saying that they've completed more than eighty percent of the work. So basically, you're going to hold back the last twenty percent until final, is why that's there. And the thirty percent is just your standard, you don't start counting stuff until thirty percent.
Okay, so I'm just reading wrong.
Well, you're not reading wrong, it's, I just, this is, this is construction law, this is construction contract law that every contractor's had to deal with. Come on, you never get paid, oh, I'm eighty percent complete, I'm at the thirty percent milestone.
I think the verbiage in that is just a little confusing.
But it's also contractual verbiage, this isn't, nobody at the county came up for that.
Okay.
What else? Density, the section, but she does the section.
Well, what he's talking about is how many houses along one mile of road do we want?
Well, I mean, that's.
That's what.
Which section of?
I think, we have, we've already taken care of part of that.
Part of that, which section are we talking about?
We're talking about minor subdivision.
So right on the subdivision.
We're talking about proliferation of the minor subdivision, how to kill urban sprawl.
You know, I was, I was thinking about that the other day. Enforcement planning is tough. And I'm thinking from a practical, how can I enforce the number of houses or subdivisions that occur along a mile stretch of highway? What mechanism do I, the, it seems burdensome to staff. I will go with that.
One, one thing you could do, so in eighty-six dash seventy, which is the primary song, page sixty-seven.
I think to some extent we've taken care of that.
I think so, too.
When we require.
So you should put that V dot road in there?
Yes.
That kills a lot of. Actually, I think I'll give more of a pushback on that.
Like that is what we're talking about. If you look at any area of the county, you look at all the stuff, all the.
What's that, sorry?
Division of the property or something.
Yes.
Towns are always saying that they've got to be. Well, that would be out on the side now.
See yours on the paper. On paper, this, eighty-six dash seventy is the number. Broke the base, sixty-seven, one nine, pardon. So I'm wondering, do we want to increase the minimum block depth from which we cut down the holding on the inside of lots? Which, which would cut down the number of blocks and where it should have hitting the street for the next.
I, I mean, from my perspective, I think, looking at the V dot road and the changes in lot sizes.
They will take care of that.
I think that will take, that will put a big damper on the kind of development. If we start messing with bulk density setbacks from red, just being selfish, it creates a lot of burden on the staff. To do that and thinking going forward, I don't know how well those kinds of things would be enforced going forward. I mean, I can assure you that they would be.
It's enforceable, it's established.
Yeah, and that's a lot of the enforcement that falls off is because, I'm not doing that, it takes too much time.
Oh, of course, three to time, so.
But on V dot side, I don't, I mean, my staff doesn't, I mean, if it's going into a V dot system, they do all the inspections, they call the performance bonds, they, all that stuff is on them.
I think by doing that, we've decreased the developer's design to build higher subdivisions.
Yes, I was definitely going to be something that we are going to hear a lot about. In fact, we'll probably hear more about that than the fifteen acre and plot size, to be honest with you.
And again, if you go into the, the fifty acre subdivisions, that's sixty acres, then it's, it may be more desirable to build those cluster subdivisions.
Yes.
Where you can go ahead and put one road in and, and build fifteen, twenty houses rather than building four houses.
Or, or nicer homes that have a higher appraisal and cut it with cost.
Somebody will better get that to.
I was talking to someone about that Friday. So I would leave, I mean, again, my preference would be not to mess with that part of it and assume that. Now, and let's, devil's advocate, let's assume that it doesn't end up fifteen and V dot standard rates, some thumps them below that. We're still going to have a reduction, I think. But the, the question I have for y'all, okay, let's, let's, you know, right now, I'm perfectly confident that the fifteen and the V dot roads are going to do the trick. But say that's not what gets finally approved, are y'all comfortable without putting any other potential tools?
I think, I think we're putting that in, as we go through the public hearing, we're going to make more.
Then I can read this.
Let me ask you this, though. So, so for density, what are you proposing to do?
Actually, I think nothing now.
What I'm saying is, is by, by requiring all these roads to come into the state system.
Right, but let's assume that doesn't apply and we're free down two acre minimum lot sizes. What, 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 what density proposals would you have that could help accomplish what we're trying to accomplish?
The thing that I proposed was number, number of homes per mile. And that's, that's any mile of road measured from any point.
So the first one in gets to do it and the later folks can't because you're going to remember.
And the same argument, you know, that we have for minors, we don't allow two minors even, so, you know, and they, I hear it all the time, well, that's not fair, just because I bought my lots, so I don't know why I'm here. But, but that would be, again, very hard to enforce.
How many entrances are you referencing for them?
Twenty houses for them, I mean, that was, that was a number.
But then it also, it also measure where, where?
Any point.
Any point. So pick any house, any driveway, say, and go on them, and then count the number of houses. And if it's more, if you're subdiv, if you're proposing a subdivision within that mile.
And you're ready to tell me?
You cannot build a house.
We've already got twenty.
And again, that would work, but it's just a, I, I don't think I could.
Well, here's the thing, there's going to be a rush if I were a landowner, to be one of the first that puts the twenty in that mile.
They're pretty much.
Then everybody, yeah, everybody else would be.
Actually, they have some of that.
I'll, no.
No.
What else?
I, yeah, I don't. Did we work this clock? Hit your clock.
It's ten thirty.
It's ten thirty.
Okay, no, it's not. It's five after ten, isn't it?
The way it's.
Yeah. Yes, the clock says five after ten.
And I can tell you that clock relies.
Correct the last one.
So I, I think, let's run through majors.
Okay.
I mean, we're sitting at the table, we've, we've got to bring the word into.
Well, we know these are dressing comments that we're going to have, which I don't have much of anything. And then our colleagues, they have a firm desire to take these programs.
I will email both of them after our meeting and see if they have any comments they want to send in before next meeting.
Major subdivisions are, which section is that?
Eighty-six dash four thirty-two on page one seventy-three. First question, hey, you're not putting the seven, the cluster subdivision.
Yes. God, they're not sending them now.
Yeah, I have, I've got to go, I was going to go through that subdivision.
You don't think we'll have to go do it, but I don't think it was.
It's not.
We don't have to include them.
I, I thought I sent it to all of you.
Yeah, you sent it to.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, it's not included in here, and that's one of the four that I'm kind of working on independently. Because at another work session, we're going to bring TCO, dogs, chickens, and cluster. It's going to be one of our work sessions. I, I think the dogs and chickens aren't going to be a problem. I don't think TCO is going to be a problem with the cluster. Actually, I think y'all are going to have to say.
I don't think anyone's going to.
Not for the work session. As far as the, the planning commissioners are concerned, as far as what I propose on the dogs.
Yeah, nobody wanted fifteen acres.
Yes. That'd be definite. Well, and that is one, that's a different dog problem than, you know, shoot, you're dealing with it. You sort of have changed orders on dog camera. Well, the five acres doesn't, three hundred feet, right, is what you're required to have roof furniture.
Yeah.
You have to be two hundred feet from any property line for a dog pen.
Yeah.
Do that.
They do that, no doubt, that killed them in the mountain.
He's a come here. Yeah, he's a come here. You know, you, you wouldn't believe some of them.
But all the people in matters of food should come here.
That's true, but if you come here, you should know dog park. You want country living, but most people don't associate country living with. Well, like I heard, you know, somebody gunfire on in my neighborhood, I'm like, yeah, there's gunfire in my neighborhood every day. You know, well, I think there's a couple guys with shooting ranges in my neighborhood, rural residential. And there was a pig in my driveway, by the way.
That's hilarious.
That's a lot.
Well, we have, we have a fire. It dropped down my driveway and I had a gate, the dogs on that side. The pig had come in off the street, it was a little black and white, potable pig. Yeah, my dogs were ready for the pig. They were on the feet, but all of the bodyguard keeps on going over that part of the fence. But yeah, there's, there's a pot-bellied pig in my driveway Friday afternoon. I love the country, I really. I was calling for it just a little bit.
So we can, so cluster subdivisions are two. Eighty-six dash four thirty-two, cluster subdivisions, they've got acres, and where will the actual rule actually be at in the ordinance?
Oh, good, I haven't decided. Actually, I do think I've already put it in somewhere, but that all got changed when I started some other thing. But the cluster itself, there's, I'm just going to put some clarity into that. I'm going, it seems appropriate to allow a single residential dwelling in the open space conservation area to provide ownership and to allow for a farmer to keep his homestead and go ahead and cluster out. We're finding a lot of difficulties with open spaces that don't have any ownership. And so this provides for some ownership while still maintaining the agriculture and the open space. That's one thing I want to clarify in the ordinance on clusters. And then there's a whole lot of stuff about fire suppression, water supplies, things like that, that I think need to be included because at this point. like that, that I think need to be included because at this point, you put a cluster in, you have a fire in there, and we don't have way to put it out. And, you know, you've got these people coming from all over the place, and if they move into a cluster division, you know, they, they're going to want the same amenities that they had before.
Does our, does our cluster subdivision ordinance require water in zone?
No.
Central water in zone?
No. That's one of the issues. We don't have, nothing in our cluster is going to be very happy to somebody buying. And I, I don't know if I'm going, it's something I'm researching.
What is the, what does the state code require for anything with over 25 lots?
I don't know. As far as cluster goes?
The state code requires anything over 25 lots to have, have a central water system.
These, I mean, that's one of the reasons I'm working on a cluster, because I don't know the answers to all of them. That's what I'm trying to figure into.
Yeah, they require to have a central water system, and they require that water system be capable of.
Well, yeah, you're, you're ahead of me, I'm, I'm, well, no, actually, I'm at the tail end of it. We need adequate water for fire suppression. I've been working my way back up the chain to see what we can legally do, what we should require, what the state requires. You know, then looking at infrastructure, you know, because a lot of this, if it's going to fall into our master utility plan, then we're going to require, even if it's not necessarily adjacent, we're still probably going to require connections to our water and to our sewer, if it's in a certain area. Again, but the cluster doesn't address any of that. Our cluster ordinance is very bare-bones, this is the minimum that the state requires us to get in, and we did.
I don't want to count that, but sure, I'm, that's a long, long.
Yeah, meets expectations, that's it, but doesn't meet requirements as far as adequacy. No.
I'm going to suggest, already 2011, staff has had a lot of, you know, preparation for that.
Yeah, I mean.
And so I would entertain motion to, to, yeah, I want to correct terminology.
Do we need to recess?
Well, to recess and tell what's going on tomorrow.
Yes, shall we recess till tomorrow?
Yeah, I would entertain motion to recess and tell what the next scheduled work session, which is tomorrow at?
6:30.
6:30. So are you making a motion or asking a?
I'm asking for motion, so.
Okay, second.
I'll just say to the volunteers, hi, we are, we're going to recess.
Okay.
Bobby, if you could just a second tonight. I mean, stretch your stuff up a bit.